Okay, everybody ready? It should be at your spot. Okay, everybody ready? All ready? Good afternoon, everybody. This business meeting of the Board of Education for August 19, 2014 is called to order. I'd like to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers. Any item that will be voted on this evening has been posted as required by state law. This meeting is being televised live and will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the Board website for replay times. This meeting is also being streamed live on our PPS TV services. Director Morton and Student Representative Jaswal are absent today. Co-Chair Atkins is listening and watching at home. She's not feeling well today. So, to begin, first on our agenda, our contract is statements from our PAT president. Our contract with the Portland Association of Teachers allows them to have a few minutes on our agenda, and I'd like to invite Gwen Sullivan, the President of PAT, to the table for comments. Welcome, Gwen.
Thank you.
Hope you're having a great summer.
Thank you. Lots of work. So, I don't have comments per se. I have more questions, and I think my questions just are things that I'm hoping that you can possibly discuss, or maybe you've already pondered about the business agenda. So, if you don't mind, I'll just ask a few.
Sure, go right ahead.
Okay, so the first thing is, I want to ask the question regarding, we know that a lot of the community-based organizations, the money that we're going to be, you're going to be voting on today, a lot of the services that the schools provide are unique in, really unique in some areas for kids that are pretty fragile, or maybe they have residential treatment, you know, that they're coping with trauma. And so, I would say that those alternative schools, I mean, they're much harder to work with kids with differing problems. Not saying it's impossible, but it's harder. So, what I'm really asking about are the schools that are a little more like things that we want within our schools. So, when I read about the different contracts, some of them talk about the uniqueness is smaller class sizes, which I would argue that's what we all want, that we want to make sure that we're meeting individual needs of students, which, again, I would argue is something that we all want. And so, knowing that, why are we contracting out versus hiring people within to be able to provide these types of services within our schools? And I go back to reading, Dick Tracy had an audit a few, I think it was two years ago.
It was last fall.
Oh, was it last fall? Thank you. And some of the recommendations, you know, as I look, are how we integrate those services within our schools, because whether they are in these outside programs, we know that there are a handful more in our schools right now that need those types of services. So, I don't understand why it's going outside rather than having it within our school system. We know that our district runs alternative high schools, and those actually have the same requirements as public schools do, and so, they're held to, you know, higher accountability. That's why I think it would be maybe a better idea to bring some of those services within. There are, let me see, says that the thing they have in common, a lot of the schools, are about rescuing kids who have either failed the big box schools or are at risk of not making it, and that's where I would argue, again, the same sorts of services, that if we had them within our big box schools, it would help, it would help to make a better impact on our schools. I'm left with, and I know that you looked at me with a quizzical face, but I think part of it is, I know in Salem, they have graduation coaches, and within the schools. They make sure that if kids aren't there, that somebody has a relationship with those kids that are at risk, so they're calling and making sure they get to school, making sure that if they're babysitting a brother or sister, that they have a place for the brother and sister to go to as well. So, I think that's something that we should look into, as well as, I would ask, has the district done anything to engage the high school, the people working in the high schools, to figure out what are some things that would help? What are some wraparound services that we need to better help our kids? I'm trying to think if there's other things. Oh, other question, Open Meadow is closing, so I didn't understand what that relationship is, and if it could just be asked, since there's money going there, just to clarify for the public. I don't know if I feel, it's a lot of money, and I just think that if we're going to do it right for all of our kids, I think that we need to figure out how we bring it in-house rather than outside as much as possible. So, I'm hoping that you can discuss some of that.
Great, thank you for your comments, and I know that during the presentation today, Karina Wolf, who heads our Alternative Services, might have some answers for some of those. I think she's in the audience somewhere, and I hope she was, there she is, I hope she was listening and can provide some of that.
Okay, yeah, I just got this, so I'm, it's hard to go through everything to see what it all means.
Sure, I know, we did too, thanks. Steve, did you have a question for?
Question for Ms. Sullivan, yeah. One of the things I had done during the budget was I'd ask, I'd suggested we take about a million dollars and spend it on social service coordinators in each of our high schools, which kind of gets at this problem, but I couldn't get support on the Board to do that, and I think it would have made a lot of difference. Do you have a comment on that? I mean, we had the one at Roosevelt that we got rid of, I tried to get her back, and we don't seem to have, I even went out to one of our alternative high schools, and we didn't have anybody who could get out of the building and into the home in that school. And so, it seems to me that one of the most difficult things to do is making these contacts and setting people up with services, and going, having somebody available who can go out and actually work with a kid where they are, and I wondered if you're, you had an opinion on that?
Well, that's part of the wraparound services that we talk about that is so important, and we used to have, I know that, Carol, you know, we used to have the truancy officers, and we would have our counselors that would work with some of the people at the school, the same types of people employed at our school that built the relationships that would be knocking on doors and coordinating services. So, yeah, it's instrumental in making that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Again, I think hopefully Karina will have a few things that she can say about that as well. So, thanks so much for being here today, appreciate that, and enjoy the rest of your summer. Okay, our one and only agenda item today is our business agenda, and on this business agenda, there are contracts for our community-based organizations, and I can see there are many representatives here from those organizations. For those who are involved in a community-based organization, could you just raise your hand so we can get an idea about how many are here? Great, thank you so much for the work that you do. And Superintendent Smith, would you like to go ahead and give us some background information on this?
Yes, briefly, I'm going to introduce Karina Wolf, who is our Senior Director of Schools for Multiple Pathways to Graduation, and I want to thank the Board for coming together for this vote tonight, or this afternoon, because it's a special Board meeting to do the votes on this contract. One of the things that Karina will be talking about as we evaluate our alternative programs that we, are a contract relationship on an annual basis, and there's actually been deep work on what are the metrics that you use to evaluate our alternative providers, and materials show that 91 percent of the students in our community-based organization schools in 2011-12 had been out of school for at least six weeks. So, we are, this is an important outreach and dropout retention strategy that is being employed with the contracts with our community-based organization alternative schools. We will be coming back together to do, for a Board work session, to go in more depth and actually invite the alternative providers to come and participate in that work session so that we can do a deeper dive on strategies that are being used, and what's being effective, and what it is that you do, that it may be different than the capacity we have in our big box schools, as our PAT president just referenced, because some of what we are able to do is harness the resources that a community-based organization has that are part of that organization that then provides some of the wraparound support. So, beyond the education that the district contracts for, it also harnesses other services for kids, for very specific populations of kids. So, Portland's been unique nationally, actually, in the relationship we have with community-based organizations and providing these services. So, with that, I will ask Karina Wolf to come on up and talk about our system and how we evaluate it.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm going to get, good afternoon, School Board Directors. I'd like to, as Superintendent Smith said, just give an overview. So, you have before you today contracts for our community-based alternative schools, or CBOs as they are known. I would like to take just a couple minutes to provide an overview of the information you received in your Board packets as it relates to the CBO contracts, specifically the alternative accountability framework and the segmentation analysis. You have read in your Board packet, you have seen in your school visits, and you will hear in public comment, our 14 contracted CBO programs serve incredible students with challenging situations. They serve students who are more likely than our overall district high school population to be students of color, male, older, between the ages of 17 and 20, identified as ELL, pregnant and parenting, homeless, or identified as needing special education services. Our alternative system serves many of our students who move into our district after their high school years have begun. It is important to share that while students served within our CBOs are like students from any other high school, coming to school with a wide range of skills and abilities, students within our CBOs are typically 17 years upon, and older upon entry, and more than six credits behind in school as they arrive with reading and math levels often falling several years below grade level. Our CBOs and our in-district alternative schools are our safety net. Deliberately, they catch students who have not been successful at previous schools. With regard to the current evaluation process of our CBOs, it is threefold. The three areas of evaluation which comprise our alternative accountability framework include our alternative accountability growth metrics report card, our contract compliance, and our qualitative review. Each contractor successfully participated in a competitive procurement process in 2010-2011 to enable them to provide contracted education services. The alternative accountability framework, the alternative accountability framework was created to provide a set of metrics which more accurately describe the successes and challenges of students enrolled in our contracted and district-run alternative schools. In 2012, within the Multiple Pathways to Graduation Department, we determined that we needed to refine our reporting of the metrics to give a clearer picture of the programs we are holding accountable. We created a year-long task force made up of district and community members, representatives from the Oregon Department of Education, and from workforce development systems to define appropriate measures. Our work was based largely on similar work done in Chicago Public Schools and Denver Public Schools. The result of the work of the Alternative Accountability Task Force includes the pilot 2012-13 Alternative Accountability Report Card. You have all received a copy of this aggregate report, pilot report card in your Board packets as well as on our School Board website. The metrics can be categorized by academic skill growth, successful completion, and school engagement. The definitions are complex and under review. For example, after the first year, we realized that we had set a higher standard for our one-year graduation rate than would be expected of any of our district high schools. This standard resulted in a percentage that is, that is lower than expected. We are modifying the definition to more accurately reflect the expectations of credit attainment of any student in a district high school. You will find this on the third sheet of the Alternative Accountability Report Card Pilot you see in the header, where the header says Alternative Accountability Metrics Definitions. Under the one-year graduation rate, the definition was students with eight or fewer credits to high school graduation. This is higher than our general high schools, and is being revised as we prepare to create the 13-14 Report Card to include in our, under our definition of a one-year graduation rate. This will include, in the future, students with six or fewer credits to high school completion, the same as used within general, general education. The alternative accountability framework, while in its infancy and still being piloted, has received attention from national and statewide partners, including the National Alternative Accountability Forum, the Oregon Department of Education, and the National League of Cities. All of these groups recognize the need to tell an accurate data story of students who have experienced multiple traumas, multiple school enrollments, and severe academic setbacks, and, as a result, are overage and under credit, and older and farther from graduating than their peers. It is important to note that the metrics and report card are only one aspect of the framework, excuse me. The other components of our alternative accountability framework are contract compliance and qualitative review. With regard to contract compliance, each year, we ensure that each of our contracted community-based organizations maintains contract of compliance. Compliance with all state and federal standards are ensured through multiple site visits to each school each year, as well as documentation received from each school. State testing, the meeting of graduation requirements, and college and career readiness indicators, such as assembling portfolios, internships and employment opportunities, and school-to-post secondary acceptance, are visible within our CBO schools. Ensuring contract compliance is required for each of our contracted partners to be eligible to maintain their CBO contracts with our school district and to be up for renewal as each CBO contract is today. Lastly, a qualitative review process is required annually within the alternative school statute by districts contracting with CBOs. In previous years, we have conducted an exit survey within the CBOs and Alliance to capture qualitative data on school climate. As you will see in the Alternative Accountability Report Card, pages three through six, includes responses from 1,193 students served within Alliance in our CBO system during the 2012-13 school year. You will also see within the data metrics on the second page of the Alternative Accountability Pilot Report Card, that school connection is measured with indicators of annual retention rate, average daily attendance, and growth in attendance. The annual retention rate for the CBOs was 71 percent during the 2012-13 school year. It is significant that for students with histories of chronic attendance, many unenrolled for six weeks or more previously, the cohort, despite challenges in academic skill growth, is showing a 71 percent annual retention rate. Currently, we are working with our partners, with Education Northwest, to develop a qualitative review. Doing so will enable us to both have qualitative and quantitative data on each contracted and in-district alternative school, so we can identify areas of strength and where growth is necessary. And then, just briefly, I'd just like to share about the segmentation analysis. The segmentation analysis was undertaken in the spring of 2012 with the intent of studying the PPS high school student populations from the perspective of how many students are off track from graduating in four years, and what sorts of services are necessary to support them in completing a high school diploma or GED. The analysis took 2011-12 October 1 enrollment data and analyzed ninth through 12th graders by age and number of credits, and then geographically located them in the city. The report has many facets, but in the end, determined that for the demand created by students leaving high school and students moving into PPS during the year, and the supply of available and appropriate options, PPS is at least 600 seats short of what we need to appropriately engage, educate, and graduate every student within our high school district boundaries by the time he or she turns 21. As a result, we are currently reviewing the segmentation analysis and looking strategically to prepare to meet the needs of all our district students within our continuum of high schools, high school programming, both with general and alternative education opportunities. This will include preparing for the next RFP cycle for our CBOs, as well as working to continue the work of our district high schools, the work of our district high school redesign, which began in 2010. Given that the segmentation analysis identified that we, as a high school system, are short approximately 600 seats, we need to continue the great work, our great work at the Reconnection Center and our Reconnection Services programming to both bring students who have unenrolled back to school, as well as improve our services within all of our general and alternative high schools across the district.
So, we're going to go ahead and put this on, up for a vote, and then I'm sure there'll be questions for you in a minute. Okay. So, the Board will now consider its business agenda. Ms. Houston, any changes?
No.
Okay. And do I have a motion and a second to adopt the business agenda?
So moved.
Director Regan moves, and Director Kurler seconds the adoption of the business agenda. Ms. Houston is their public comment. I know there is, okay.
Yes, we have six. Our first two speakers, Tom DeJardin and Sativa Newcomber.
And I believe we also have such a popular topic today. We have folks who are also submitting written testimony, and if that's the case, then if they could give that to Roseanne Pell, who is our Board Manager, that would be great. She's sitting down here in the front. Roseanne, ready to use a hand? Okay, great. Thanks.
This is the business people?
This is the business agenda.
But what happened to the original people who were supposed to talk at the start of the meeting?
We didn't, we, this is just a business agenda meeting, and so, this is the, this is it.
There's no such thing as a business agenda meeting. It doesn't exist under the law or under our policies.
This is, this-
This is a regular meeting with only looking at the business agenda, so theoretically with, we need to vote to see if we're going to limit the past practice that we have.
No, no, we don't. Mr. DeJardine, would you like to go ahead?
Thank you.
Thank you.
School Board Directors and Superintendent Smith, thank you for this opportunity to speak this afternoon on behalf of the contracted community-based organizations serving Portland Public Schools. I have been the Executive Director for Mount Scott Learning Centers for the past 10 years. Prior to that, I was the Communications Coordinator for Salem Kaiser Public Schools for 10 years, and also for five years served as the Director of that district's charter high school. During these 25 years working in public education and another 10 in the private sector, I had become well aware of the need for quality education options for those students that, for whatever reason, are not successful in the traditional school environment. Who are the students that the CBOs serve? Our programs serve students who, compared to students in the larger traditional schools, are disproportionately older than the typical PPS high school student, significantly behind in credits, living in poverty, impacted by mental health or abuse issues, in foster care or homeless, involved in the juvenile justice system, on average, two to three years behind in reading and math, impacted by drugs and alcohol, students of color, special education students, pregnant or parenting, and living in single-parent households. All of these barriers and many more negatively affect these students' ability to stay and succeed in school, graduate from high school, and be adequately prepared for success after high school. As was mentioned earlier, over 90 percent of the students CBOs serve have been out of school at one point for at least six weeks or more before enrolling, before enrolling in a CBO program. The CBO programs are recapturing these youth who had either dropped out of school or are on the verge of dropping out. The CBO programs are reconnecting these students to the school district and their education, and setting them up for future success. So, how do we do this? We provide a flexible and responsive student-centered model that many students and families need in order to stay engaged in school. We provide personalized and differentiated instruction to meet students where they are. We fundraise a significant portion of our budgets and leverage a variety of resources and community partnerships in order to meet the high needs of our student populations. We provide creative and innovative instructional strategies for inside and outside the classroom, such as Open Meadow's highly successful step-up program, Portland Youth Builders Career Technical Education Program, Portland Community College's Gateway to College Program, and the CBO-generated High School Graduation Initiative, which was a five-year federal grant that brought in millions of additional dollars to the district to support academic priority students. We do all of this, and much more, in close collaboration, alignment, and partnership with the school district, and the demand for our services remains high, with most of our programs already at contract capacity for the upcoming school year. I recently had the honor of serving on the district's year-long high school action team, which was charged with developing recommendations on how to improve the district's graduation rate. One of the team's subcommittees, which included Bobby Regan, visited Mount Scott Learning Center and conducted a focus group with our students. First of all, thank you, Bobby, for taking the time to come out to our school and meet with our students and learn about our program. And please know there is a standing invitation to all Board members to visit the various CBO programs whenever possible. In closing, on behalf of the CBO programs, I want to thank you for your support and the commitment you have to helping our students.
Thank you.
Point of order.
My name is-
Point of order.
I'm Director Buell.
Can we discuss when all these six people are done testifying about the other people who would like to testify, who are not allowing to testify correctly? Because it's going to take, while I'm a big alternative school fan, I'm a big fan of running the meetings appropriately and correctly according to our policies, and we're not doing this according to our policies. We need to have a vote in order to limit the testimony, and there's a, and there's a reason that that should take place. We obviously have other testimony.
Director Buell, right. Well, thank you very much for your comments, I appreciate that. The leadership sets the agenda, we set the agenda, and this is the agenda that we have.
You don't get to set the agenda according to-
Yes, yes, we do, according to our policies, as you continue to talk about.
Right, according to our policies.
Exactly, thank you very much.
But we're not doing it according to the policies.
You may go ahead.
My name is Sativa Newcomber. I graduated from Mount Scott Learning Center in June 2014. I would like to share my story. I came from many different struggles, a home of substance abuse and domestic violence, which then led to being placed in the foster care system. I bounced around schools a lot throughout my childhood, I went to seven different elementary schools. During my freshman year at my old high school, my father died due to substance abuse, which in combination with teachers who did not empower me in my education, I dropped out for the majority of my first year. I started at Mount Scott my sophomore year, a year behind in credits and not on a path to graduate on time. During the beginning of my junior year at Mount Scott, I found out I was pregnant. Mount Scott helped me to graduate on time, it was the environment at Mount Scott that helped me and empowered me to push through my struggles and succeed in my education. Despite all of the challenges I faced, academics was never my problem. I did what I needed to do to catch up, maintain a GPA of 3.68, and graduate on time. Mount Scott's small community brings many different students together who have faced their own struggles and connects them with teachers who care about their success. Now, I'm on a path into college, as a Future Connect scholar with funding from the Pell Grant and Oregon Opportunity New Grant. I'm enrolled in PCC in this fall term to begin my prerequisites to assist me to transfer for the nursing program at OHSU and become a registered nurse. Thank you, Mount Scott, and thank you to the members of the Board.
Thank you for being here, and good luck to you.
Point of order.
The next two, Ms. Houston?
Point of order.
Our next two-
Director Buell?
I want to challenge ruling of the Chair, which means it would take four votes to rule that we would eliminate the other six members of the community who would like to speak. I'm not sure you got four votes who want to do that.
I'm not quite, no. You, that is, that's not quite the way that happens.
Sure it is.
Is there something that you would, so I'm thinking what you want to know is if we can add six people, or add more people to our agenda for public testimony?
No, I want to, no, what I want to know is if we would have the public testimony that we've all agreed upon, which is six people at the meeting and six people speaking to the resolution, and that's the public testimony system. There's no such thing as a business meeting, there's only a business agenda at a regular meeting, and so, I just want to run, I want to run, we've got, we're spending $7 million, over $7 million, and if we're going to spend over $7 million, we should run the meeting according to our policies and past practices, which are the two things that you do.
And as I have stated, that the leadership set the agenda, the agenda's been published for a week, the agenda calls for a business agenda, and there's public testimony on the business agenda.
But that's not the agenda.
That is our public-
Agenda is what's on the meeting.
That's right.
The Chairperson cannot unilaterally change past policy or past practices without having the Board do that. You don't, you don't have to, I mean, it's, you just don't have the power to do that within the thing. You run the meeting and you set the agenda. The agenda's been set, but it didn't include the public people speaking.
I understand your concern. I, I understand your concern and I'm just, I'm sorry, but you're not, you're not correct.
Well, let's vote and see if I'm correct or not. I've challenged the ruling of the Chair, so let's vote and see if I'm correct.
You're challenging my ruling on what?
I'm challenging your ruling on, on the elimination of the six people that normally would be allowed to speak at this meeting. That's the challenge. And you need four votes to, to wipe them out because that's the past practice. You either go by policy or past practice, state and federal law, and we're not doing any of those things. You just can't make it up off the top of your head.
Again, thank you. We are going by our practices and I guess we will go ahead and vote on, so we'll take a vote on whether to, I'm still not clear because there has, I haven't ruled on anything. So we will vote on whether to add another set of public comment to the business agenda, whether we're required to do that under our policies.
Okay, I could live with that.
So.
I can live with that. It's close enough. Good compromise.
Okay. All those in favor?
I don't, I don't understand what voting is.
No, 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 we're voting to knock it off, not to add it. You gotta vote to knock it off because we have it. It's part of our agenda every week. I mean, every time we have a meeting, we have two types of comments. One is the general comment for the meeting at the beginning, which is, which we have limited to six people. We have, as a Board, have limited to six people. And the second part is the comment on the resolution. So that would make 12 people to comment today. So you've got to have the four votes to knock them off, not to add them on.
No, that is not our policy and is not always our practice either. So your point of order has to do with whether we should add more people.
No, it's whether we should knock them off.
I guess we'll move forward without it then. There is no, no, we're done.
Let's vote on, let's vote on your ruling now. I've challenged that ruling.
Okay.
So you need to vote that you're, you need to get four votes to say that your ruling's correct.
Okay.
That's fine. I don't like that.
Do we have people that would like to testify?
Yes, we have. People who'd like to testify have been cut off. No, they can't testify now.
We have, we have a certain number of people who signed up to testify. We have others who wanted to and we told them the best way to do that, since we are full, is to go ahead and provide written comment for testimony. So, and I'm not quite sure how we would pick who gets to testify if there are more out there because we are not going to have open testimony for all afternoon.
We could draw votes. That would work.
Okay.
Well, my, my general sense is if somebody provides this written testimony at this time, unless we take the time to read through that, it's sort of meaningless. So if, if there were people who were interested in signing up prior to the meeting and we have six slots, I would like to hear from them personally, so.
Okay. Well, we don't, we don't have six slots. I'm not sure, Ms. Houston, do you have a list of people who signed up, who wanted to sign up?
I do not. I know for sure, there is one, Teresa McGuire.
Well, let's let her testify.
Okay, then we'll have Ms. McGuire testify.
Point of order. I, I thought that the agenda was set as originally published. Our normal processes for public procedure, we turned folks away. It sounds like at least one. So I thought we were gonna rule on a ruling before we decided whether or not to add.
Sure.
Good point. So let's go ahead and rule or have a vote on the ruling to add more slots for public comment at this meeting. So, all those in favor of adding more slots for public comment at this meeting?
You got it reversed, though. Again, you have to go the other direction. You have to vote on the, there's no-
Director Buell, you are out of order.
Well-
And you are wrong and that's why I'm not phrasing it that way. If you would like us to just not vote, that's fine, too.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like us to just not vote then.
Okay.
Then be fine, but let's, then let's vote on the appropriate, the appropriate way.
Right. Thank you.
Instead, or allow people to testify, one or the other.
My understanding is the point of order right now is to allow, a question about the point of order is to allow more, six more people onto public comment.
No, the allow, the point, the point of order was to allow the testimony, not to allow the testimony, but you have to vote in order to eliminate the testimony. Because the testimony is, is there in past practice.
No, the agenda is set.
You don't, it's not part of the agenda. The testimony is not the agenda. The testimony is set, period. The agenda is what we're going to deal with.
Can I call the question on this until we can just take a vote?
Well, which way you get a vote?
Whatever the Chair wants us to vote, we'll vote.
Okay. So then we'll vote on whether we're going to add more to public comment. All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Okay. So one, two, three to two. So we will not be adding more.
Yep.
Thank you.
Typical backroom deal.
Okay, now, let's go ahead. Director Buell, please, you're out of order again. So can we go forward with who, I think we're on public comment. Thank you.
Our next two speakers, Joe McFerrin and LeBra Franklin.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me. Yes, are we on? Can you hear me?
You are on.
Okay. Good afternoon, members of the Portland Public Schools Board and Superintendent Smith. Thank you for this opportunity to make some brief comments to you regarding the funding of community-based education options. My name is Joe McFerrin, President and CEO of Portland OIC and the Rosemary Anderson High School. I have worked for Portland OIC for the past 19 years to help youth and families thrive. I'm also a Portland native and a member of the Grant High School's 1987 graduating class.
Go Generals.
That's right. Portland and Rosemary Anderson High School has been accredited since 1989 and has partnered with PPS for over 20 years to provide education to many of our city's highest risk, highest risk, low-income students of color. Many of our students are involved with foster care and the juvenile justice system, are gang-impacted or young parents. The key to our success over the past 20 years has been our ability to leverage the support of PPS while also securing investments from public and private sources to build a holistic system of care that provides our students with wraparound services. Students attending Rosemary Anderson High School receive family support, mental health services, young parent education, crisis management services, job placement, and job training services. To ensure ongoing stability and self-sufficiency, we serve all graduates until the age of 25. As a testament to our success and partnership with Portland Public Schools in supporting at-risk youth and making a drastic life change and getting on a path to success, the schools of East Multnomah County and the David Douglas, Gresham Barlow, and Centennial School Districts have requested our assistance with adopting a similar system of care. In 2012, we opened a second Rosemary Anderson High School campus in the Rockwood neighborhood. And since, we have seen great community and district support as well as a growing demand for our services. Rosemary Anderson High School receives support and collaboration throughout the community, including from Multnomah County's Human Services and Juvenile Justice Services Department for Family Support, Portland Children's Levy to provide mentors, the City of Portland's Office of Youth Violence Prevention to provide alternatives to gang involvement, the Oregon Youth Development Council for Gang Prevention.
Mr. McFerrin, I, I apologize. I forgot to read you the instructions ahead of time, but when the red light goes on and the buzzer sounds, we ask you to wrap up your testimony.
Okay.
Thank you.
Gang services and before and after-school programming, and also the Local Workforce Investment Board to provide job placement and training. And I'd like to say that, you know, Rosemary Anderson is just one option that you have in your district. Our CBOs are unique and provide a safety net for, for most of our most vulnerable students in Portland. So thank you for letting me share my comments with you today.
Thank you very much.
How you guys doing? I'd like to thank you guys for having me here. I'm LeBra Franklin. I'm a student at POIC. One of the biggest things that I learned about this program is more than a school. It's, it's for at-risk use, at-risk use, excuse me. But when we say at-risk, it's not necessarily at-risk of death or prison. It's at-risk of not being successful because a lot of kids, a lot, a lot of youth in, in North Portland and, you know, in, in the bad areas, they, they fail for structure. They don't have structure. And the things that this school provides to you is, is they, they open a lot more doors than just a, a regular school. It's not just a school. You see what I'm saying? It's a program. It's an organization that's designed to actually build you as, as a woman or a man. They're not just designed to give you a diploma. They're designed to, to create a, a successful human being that can actually fit in with, with everybody else and actually do things that pertain to them that they actually like. You see what I'm saying? And as, as being a student at this school, I've seen how a lot of these teachers and, I wouldn't even call them teachers, I would say mentors. I call them mentors most of the time. And I would see, I see how these people, they take, they take this job very serious and they go above and beyond when speaking with somebody. When you, I'm not, once again, I'm not bashing nobody. I'm not trying to make nobody sound bad, but being in a bigger environment, when you have a teacher that has 125 students rather than having 20 to 30 students, he can't get around to speak to you necessarily, to speak to you, sit down and have that one-on-one conversation. And some kids, they need to be reassured that they're, a lot, that they're doing good. You know, they, they need to hear that they're doing good and they, and they need to, they need to have somebody there to work with them all the way through. A lot of kids, they, they can't focus a lot because being around people, you see what I'm saying? So when you're in a smaller environment, it gives you more, it gives you more room to mess up, but also it gives you more room to bring yourself back in because they're gonna make sure that you can't hide there. There's nowhere to hide. It's too, it's too small, you know? And personally, I can say from my experience, my freshman year, I didn't go to school enough to get graded. I didn't, I didn't attend. And that's from family problems, not, not having the resources and things that I needed. So, and from going from, from a big school to going to an alternative school, it, it helped me a lot. I left from, I left from public schools with 0.6. I got 3.1 now. You see what I'm saying? I, I've, I've been a part of amazing things. They've opened, they've opened many opportunities, opened many doors. I've, I've, they put me in BMA, which is Black Male Achievement, and I've been around, I've been around people that's doing better things. And, and, and like I said, it's more than the school. It's the program that counts. And I feel like the, the alternative, the alternative word, when people hear alternative, they think negative. They think negative, which is really not what it is. It's really just, it's another way. And everybody learns differently, you know? People have different ways of learning things. All you guys up there have different feelings, different thoughts, so you guys, you know, everybody, they, they take heat to things very differently. And it's, I feel like it can be, it can be more of a help to hard-headed kids. That's one of the things, you know? That's the truth. You know, it is more of a help. Because me personally, I needed, I, I wouldn't take advice from somebody unless, you know, I really care about them or they care for me. So relationships are one of the things that help with education, but, you know, I feel like this organization and this program should be around for a long time and I, and I'm in support of it as a young African-American male until I get old. I'm gonna support it all the way, so.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Franklin, and good luck to you.
Our last two speakers are Leah Gibson and Deborah Hughes.
So I'm gonna go ahead and let you know, because I forgot to tell these other folks on our public comment, you'll see a green light go on and you have two minutes. When the yellow light goes on, it means one more minute, and when the red light comes on, it means we ask you to wrap up your comments. So thank you very much for both being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Leah Gibson and I'm here today to speak on behalf of Gateway to College. And I just want to kind of go off of what the last student speaker said. He said that when he's old, when he's an old man, he's still gonna be supporting these programs. And that's how I feel. I'm one of those, maybe not old, but older adults, and I just want to tell you guys about my story. So some of you might have heard of my story. I grew up in an impoverished neighborhood in Portland and experienced a lot of the challenge, a lot of the same challenges that some of the other kids here have talked about through middle and high school. And by the time I was a junior in high school, I had dropped out of two high schools and one alternative school and had very few, few credits towards graduation. I had been exposed to a lot of negative influences and struggled with alcohol and drug abuse, which extremely affected my mental health. I ran away from home several times and had lived on the streets and shelters and couch-surfed. I'd also been through a drug and al, drug and alcohol treatment program and a mental health program. I really thought that the best thing that could ever happen to me was to get a GED and get a good job. Just when I felt like giving up, one of my high school counselors signed me up for Gateway to College. I appreciated that they treated me like an adult from the beginning and I was motivated by their high expectations of me. They broke down my barriers to getting, to getting to high school and going to college by providing bus tickets and paying for my books and tuition as well as wraparound services. My resource specialist called me all the time to check on me periodically and made sure that I did my homework, but on top of that, she went above and beyond to take me to therapy appointments that I needed to go to and checking in with my teachers and stuff like that. I graduated Gateway to College in 2004. By then, I was connected to the PCC community and I was in student government, and I decided to stay and finish two associate's degrees, which I received in 2006. I then went on to receive my bachelor's degree and my master's degree from Portland State University, and I got my master's degree in 2011. Now I am a grant writer at an amazing nonprofit organization called Friends of the Children. There, I work with disenfranchised, disenfranchised youth who remind me a lot of myself. I choose to give back to PCC by coming to places like this and speaking on behalf of their program because I know that it is only through the program, or the power of programs like this, that I am who I am today with the opportunities that I have to make positive changes in the lives of at-risk youth. I am standing before you today to thank you for your past support of the Gateway to College program, and I request that you continue to support it so that youth who are a lot like I was have the opportunity to overcome the barriers of, their barriers to success like I did. I also want to note quickly that there are a lot of community-based organizations here that are represented in this room that have also touched my life. One of them is Open Meadow and another one is NEA. And through the combined support of these programs, sorry, very emotional, I was able to succeed. So it wasn't just one program, it was all of them altogether. So for youth like me, with all the challenges that I had, I really feel that a resource person or a counselor in a high school is not enough. It is definitely not enough for these kids. And it's just not going to cut it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mary.
Congratulations on your journey.
Thank you. Hello, I'm Deborah Hughes. I'm a grandparent who has had three children to matriculate through Open Meadow program. And the reason I've come here today is because from my point of view, I think the parent can more accurately speak to some of the challenges that have been managed by the CBO programs. I'd like to say that I've also lived in seven different states where I have been involved in my grandchildren's education, and I think that what's going on here in Portland is very unusual. And I've heard that, that stated already. My observations of my three grandchildren, all different, is that every one of them gets up and goes to school. In other words, they are cheerful in the morning to go to school, and this is something that I had not seen in these children or, or the others. The other fact in my observations has been that they trust their mentors, teachers in this program. We can very rarely fool our young people into thinking that we care about them, but my grandchildren still revisit those that have graduated, still revisit those folks that had taken care of them when they were in school. I'd also like to speak to their academic achievements. I was a little suspicious when they left their big-box education and came to Open Meadow and all of a sudden they started getting good grades. So I went up and challenged Open Meadow. Let me see what this curriculum's based on. It obviously isn't going to equal what they could have been getting in other situations. And that's not true, I've seen documentation of that. So they are compelled to compete at the same level. My other observation is that, being a grandparent and having three grandchildren live with me, there are a lot of kids that come in and out of my house. And what I observed about the children that visit with my grandchildren is that they're from all different ethnic backgrounds and socioeconomic backgrounds. So it's almost like a little United Nations, which I think is another education component that we don't consider, knowing people who are different from yourself. I would hope that the board approves the contract, but I also would like to ask something that has, is probably not mine to ask. And that is, Portland has so many different associations and groups that help. I would like for us to be the model for the comp- country to say that we pull down our silos, it's not, should, should this kind of alternative education be in, in big-box schools? Or should it be only in alternative? I think it should be both, because there's no one-stamp answer. I'm not naive, I know it's gonna take a lot to make that change management happen. But some of the protocols used in the CBOs could be applied in very small sessions in the big-box schools like Grant and Roosevelt, where you have a resource center where those kids come into. Thank you for letting me talk.
Thank you very much.
Okay, at this time, we're able to have board discussion. So questions, comments from the board?
Is Ms. Wolf coming back?
If you would like her, you bet. Sure, Bobby?
I'm happy to start, and I may come back around.
Sure.
Have more to say as we continue our discussion. So first of all, thank you for your testimony, and thank you to everyone who testified. And always great to hear from students and from folks who have been through the programs and seen the huge benefits, and it makes it all very real to us. I had a sister who was out of school for many, many months during high school when my mom was passing away, and so I have a, a little bit of a sense of what it's like to fall way, way, way behind from a personal level and what it takes to come back, so. And also on the alternative school side, when I first came on the board in two thousand three, Delafris Williams was on the board as well, and she and I made the effort to visit every single alternative school at that time to really get a better understanding of how we support our kids and in what different ways. And so that was great, and I've tried to keep up, but probably need to be doing the rounds again, so. I had sent an email out to my board colleagues this week expressing some frustration mo- mostly about the timing of this vote, more than anything else, because we're starting school in two or three weeks, and of course, we are going to be approving these, because otherwise, we'd be leaving a couple of thousand kids stranded. But it's also more about the discussion of the yes and, what are we doing in our community comprehensives to make sure that we are providing the supports that we need to be providing? So our PAT president mentioned this audit on improving graduation rates in Portland Public Schools. It's a great piece of reading. It's from June two thousand thirteen, and there were many, many recommendations in this about what we're doing well and about what other districts and other states are doing well. And I think that we've made some efforts, both originally in two thousand ten with our high school system redesign, and how do we serve kids in our schools, and how do we restructure to better serve kids? There's a couple of areas that we're still getting to, like decreasing our ratio, you know, counselor to student ratio, and we took that from four hundred to three fifty. We know we have more work to do, we now have counselors in every school starting next year, which is exciting. And CTE, the Career Technical Education, in every single one of our high schools is still something that we're working on, but this year, for the first time, we'll have a career coordinator in every high school. So there's many, many things we're doing in our community comprehensives and many, many more things that we need to do, including making sure that our kids have a full day of classes. And if they are in a study hall, making sure it's meaningful and they're getting some kind of tutoring support or whatever it might be. So there's a whole variety of ways that we know we need to do better by our community comprehensives, and that's the discussion I wanna be having before we make these kinds of approvals, because always what we're doing on the board is managing budget priorities. And in the way I'm thinking, the alternative, our alternative schools are huge important partners of ours. And I think will always be a huge and important partner. But what I wanna know is what are we doing on this side that will hopefully support kids earlier? And in a, perhaps in a more substantive way in terms of relationships, whether we need some social workers in our schools, all of our schools, that sort of thing. So that if, if we, if we aren't, i- i- if a kid falls here, we still always wanna have the alternative schools to pick them up, but I wanna be catching them earlier. And in particular, there was quite a bit of discussion, and so I'm gonna have one specific question for you. In, in particular, there was one particular discussion in this about the fact that we need to move our supports down farther into middle school level, because already, as kids are coming into our high school, they're struggling. And we already know that kids are, some kids are at risk as they come into our high schools. So I have a specific interest in that, and I don't believe that's what we can or should be talking about today, but it is the reason that I asked board leadership for us to be doing a deep dive earlier in the process, like in the fall and before the budget process, so that we can kind of really have that deep-dive discussion. So my question is, Open Meadow. So Open Meadow, fabulous alternative school, and it is closing its doors in terms of the high school program by the end of this year, this coming year. So it's serving last year's juniors, and it's gonna take those juniors through. And otherwise, it's moving to more of a Multnomah County approach and moving more to focus on middle schools. So I was particularly curious about, so, A, I'm, I'm pleased, I'm sad for the middle, for the high school kids that were being served by that program, I'm pleased that we're looking more at the middle school level. But I, I don't really understand in terms of the budget for Open Meadow in here. Is it more, is it less, is it different, how does it? What students are we serving? Are we actually funneling different or more middle school kids into the program? Or is it? I wanna know what's happening with Open Meadow.
So, thank you for that question. So with regard to Open Meadow, we, as you know, Open Meadow is having their last class of seniors in the coming year, and so we have sp- space for forty seniors for our Open Meadow High School. We have also contracted at an amount that would serve a greater number of middle school students and providing greater support in our Open Meadow, as well as our Mount Scott, who are, are out of our contracted alternative programs. Those are the two schools that serve students in grades six through eight. So we have additional supports, bo- both at Mount Scott and Open Meadow.
Okay, that's helpful. So that's, I may come back, but go ahead.
Sure.
Thank you.
We'll try and move it around a little bit. Others?
Craig?
Sure, I just, a couple of comments. I appreciate the comments from public testimony that talks about maybe it's not an either-or. At the same time, I appreciate what you're saying, Director Regan, that we have to really understand what's going on at our comprehensive high schools. And I remember when we got our report from the high school system design, it had talked about a mismatch, that we, we were looking at profiles of students, and then we were noticing that some students were going to alternative high schools that were not typical, quote-unquote, whatever that means, and not to generalize, but. And so what I really appreciated in our, in our information, and I know that we had kind of alternating copies, and, but we got the information shortly thereafter, the segmented analysis that begins to really, because what I, what I appreciate is, rather than just making a knee-jerk reaction one way or another of, oh, it must be this, or it must be that, I mean, even the audit points out, it highlights that we're one of a few that, that do this contracting, but it, it's clear to not make a causal relationship, that it's tough to make a causal relationship. So what I appreciate is that, from what I've seen from that report on high school system redesign, I've seen staff, and we budgeted for this, we were intentional about then using resources to do a segmented analysis to begin to understand what, exactly what you were saying, Director Regan, about who's going, why are they going, where are they going, where are we failing them? And then again, as part of this last budget process, we prioritized investing in the early warning system. So to your point, Director Regan, about trying to find the resources to make sure that we catch, catch folks early. Because I was astounded in the segment analysis that, I mean, there, it's almost a third, if I'm remembering correctly, a third of our dropouts are kids that are actually in ninth grade on track in our comprehensive high schools. And that's unusual, quote-unquote.
Right.
So I just really appreciated the information, I look forward to our deep dive on this. And with all the community-based organizations here, I just wanna say thank you all for the work that you're doing. And for the students that all came, I appreciate your being here. It's, it's, I don't wanna say it's a great reminder, but you are testaments to how hard folks work and the determination that it takes to get through school, so thank you all. I'm sorry, I didn't have any questions, but I got called on.
Anybody else? Steve, do you have anything?
Thank you. I'm a big supporter of alternative schools, but I'm a big supporter of alternative schools. I'm not a big supporter of schools that were going to over. We've got, we've got kids in, in schools that end up going to a different place where they're going to be treated slightly differently. If we don't treat them differently to some degree, then they're going to have difficulty there too. And so I get real nervous when we begin to talk about qualitative review and accurate data and so forth. It makes me nervous, 'cause I, I want the alternative schools to be alternative schools, not to be kind of a, s- another type of school. Because that, those types, we already have failed in those cases to a huge degree with a lot of children. And it's not that the schools have failed, it's not even that the school boards failed. It's that, it's very, very difficult to work with a lot of kids in society the way society has changed. It's really hard, it's really hard. And if we keep coming, if we come into these alternative schools and say like we do to the regular schools, you wanna follow, this is it. That, that's not gonna work, and it's not, and it's not helping anything. So I'm, I kinda like freeing those schools up as much as I possibly can. I was, I went out to Alliance and I talked to the principal there and said, who, who do we have that goes into the home? We didn't, they didn't have anybody. I mean, how can we work with children who are struggling in their lives if we don't have anybody who can make those connections? It doesn't make sense to me, and so I think a lot of places with these, what's happening is, like you go to NEA, and we give, we're giving them seven hundred thousand dollars, but they have all these other resources that are added in on top. NEA isn't just the money we give them, they get money from the state, they get all this other, the other resources. And so in that way, we are benefiting tremendously from these community organizations. We, we really benefit hugely. But at the same time, we need to look, as Bobby says, and at what we're doing, and it's not necessarily just in the high school. Our, the middle, we have this middle school area with sixth through eighth grade children, where we're just devastating tho- those particular children. I mean, we're, we've got them in a situation where it's really, really hard to be successful and succeed. It's really hard to engage them in school. We need to start to look at that, and I would hope that the people who are out here in the CBOs would say, yeah, you need to, yes, and would push us to do those things in the middle school, 'cause the middle schools where the kids begin to drop out. You can talk all you want about third-grade reading, but it's the middle schools where kids begin to drop out. And there's the middle schools where kids begin to go off into other areas and get in with different friends, and you have all these difficulties that you don't get necessarily the same way in, in primary schools. And you've already established so much in the high schools, by the time a, a kid gets to high school, he or she has already established all these patterns, and then we're breaking the patterns. We should be fixing that before they establish the patterns, and, and, and we don't, we're, we're not really looking at that as a district. And so I'm, yeah, I'm supportive of these, well, absolutely, we need these, these. The alternative schools are absolutely necessary, and I want us to free them up. I don't wanna be out there saying, okay, you gotta do it this way, that's a bunch of malarkey. It doesn't work, because that, what works for those kids is their relationships with the people. You ask them, you ask them. What worked for those kids who have been successful coming out of here, it's their relationships. It's not the fact that we, we now have this little systematized qualitative evaluation. It's because this particular teacher took the time and the energy, and we set up a system where they could actually do that. When you start doing these little qualitative analysis and the little report cards and stuff, you don't end up with a system that allows the teacher to do that, because the teacher and the staff get oriented in those directions instead of oriented towards the children. We have a similar situation with the testing that we do in the school, whole school system. We get oriented towards the testing. Now, we're, we're nuts on the graduation requirements. And yeah, we brought them up, but if you look into them, some of them are edgy. And what we really wanna do is educate kids so they can go out and be a success in society. You don't do that with little report cards that you're asking. You do that by hiring teachers and getting the people in those schools to work together for children. It's the same in every school. I mean, we, if you look at that TELS survey that they did, and we have these principals who are running six percent trust and respect, or their, their staff can't bring anything to them. That doesn't work. We have to be careful that in these alternative schools, that we're, that that's not what's taking place. If you walk to an alternative school and nobody says hello to you as, I've gone out, I went out to one and no one, you know, nobody said, how you doing, or nobody, they just kinda went about their business and they didn't make any difference. You could just feel that the atmosphere wasn't what it should be in that school. And so that's much more important than having a, a good set of metrics. Metrics is fine to figure out how you're doing to some degree, but that's not where our efforts should be, and I don't think that's where the efforts should be from the administration. And so I think it's important that we start up and think about those, and to think that we're going to do a deep dive? I've been here a year, the only deep dives we've done are in the kiddie pools. We haven't really sat down and figured out what was going on, really, in anything, since I've been here, with the exception of the ten months that we took messing around with the contract, which we did a pretty deep dive in the contract, and I guess we came out after a while, but we were underwater a long, long time. And so I, I just don't have any faith that we're gonna do a deep dive and come to this, because generally, what we've done is kinda smoothed it over and didn't wanna look bad. So we don't necessarily really wanna go out and look at these alternative schools and say, okay, where are the problems, how can we make them better? I'd be all for that, but I don't think we're gonna get there. Thank you for the time, thank you for coming forward. I did have one more question, which was a question, not a comment. Now, how do, i- if we say, if we give a, let's say we give a, a alternative school eight hundred thousand dollars. How, do we ma- that money, where does that, most of that money go in, in these CBOs? For instance, if we have, if we have, let's say they have a hundred kids and we give them eight hundred, let's say we give them seven hundred thousand dollars, they have a hundred kids. Well, you can put those kids in twenty-five kids in a class for thirty-two hundred about, 'cause they're paying their teachers less than we pay them, right?
They get, they do not have all the benefits and other things that our teachers have.
And so we're kinda getting a deal, 'cause we're, we're paying their teachers less, I guess, if you wanna look at it that way. But if, if we give them seven hundred thousand and, and they have a hundred children, that's seven thousand a kid, and you could do four teachers, it would be thirty-two hundred, so you got another thir- three, thirty-two, excuse me, three thou- three hundred and twenty thousand, you have another three hundred and eighty thousand left over. Where would, does that usually go? They'll split the classes again, so twelve, I mean, do we average just way less class size? Or do that, does the money go someplace else, or, 'cause?
So are you asking about the billing process?
No, I'm just talking about, no, I'm talking about actually out in the school itself. How do they come up with their budget? Do we work with that at all with them and say, this money needs to go here, or anything like that?
They are their own organizations, and we contract with them for educational services. They supply on a monthly basis, students served and days present. They enter their information, as do all our schools, and it, as far as our data collection services. And their, their con- their, the finance department pays them accordingly to have the number of students they served.
But I mean, what I'm saying is, if we're paying them seven thousand per student and they can educate a hundred kids and twenty-five kids in a classroom for half of what we're giving them, where does the other half actually go? Does it go like they have a, does it go into overhead? Does it, I mean, where would the money actually be spent? Maybe somebody here could, just out of cur- I just wanna know if we pay attention to that, or we care, or know, or whatever.
So again, they're each their own organization, and we contract for their education services. In the compliance part that I spoke about, as far as the annual review and the annual site visits, we have our program director of contracted alternative schools, as well as a manager within our finance department that do a review every quarter on each of our schools.
Tom?
So, how, how do we, how have we come up with the seventy-three hundred per student? Why, why is that the right number? Why isn't it higher, why isn't it lower?
So that's a, a good question. So what we do with regard to finances is we take our net operating expense, which is a, based on a formula that's developed within our district around the net operating expense for each student. And we pay, as a district, we pay actually eight, eighty percent of that. And we pay, as a district, we pay actually eight, eighty percent of that. And that's where we get our figure, as far as what gets paid per pupil for each student. So one of the things, a question came up the other day about the rate, so that we had a net operating expense increase from last year to this year of seventy-seven, of seventy-seven cents per student per day. So we get, so as far as that seventy-three, exactly what it is, I think it's seventy-three oh six, actually, that is, that's eighty percent of our net operating expense on any given year as determined by the district.
Bobby?
My general sense is in terms of our alternative schools and the budgets, I mean, we have, you know, if you look at Carol Sattler, he had a split among forty-eight thousand students. I mean, that, at a per student basis, if you look at a principal in an alternative school, you're looking at, you know, a hundred, two hundred kids who are sharing that cost. I mean, there's all kinds of economies of scale and lease and property, and mostly just huge mentorship and social service supports. You know, all those folks who are going out and doing home visits, there's, there's a cost involved. So I don't, I don't necessarily question that piece. And when I'm talking about doing a deep dive, Steve, I'm much more interested in doing a deep dive around what's happening in our own community comprehensives. And I know that we are doing some really great work and we're, and we're moving services in. And this is the first year that we've really had a budget where we could do more in terms of investments, rather than either a hold-study budget last year or cuts before that. So I'm much more interested in the deep dive around what are the, what are the things that Hillsborough's doing? What are the things that Salem's doing? And we took a, a really good look at that in the high school task force, and I think we know where we want to move. What I want to be doing is having that discussion early in the cycle when we're doing budget prioritization, as opposed to two or three weeks before school starts. And again, I don't expect that alternative schools will be sidelined. I expect that they will be a part of it, but this is where I really want to do the deep dive, so that, you know, if, if we have a, a void of six hundred students that we are still wanting to serve in all alternative schools, I guess my question is, could we be serving them here instead? And what is it that we would need to be doing to effectively serve those? And that's what I'm looking for in a deep dive. Yes, I want to hear what the practices and protocols are in the alternatives. Maybe we could learn a lot from them, and maybe we need to invest more. I don't know if that's the answer. But that's the deep dive, and more for me is the timing of that. And three weeks before school is not the time to have that conversation, so.
Others? Okay, well, let me just, I just have a couple of things, Krieger. First of all, I guess I, I want to say that our schools, I mean, I think we are continually starting to pick up, and have been for years, picking up our students where our families or our schools or others have failed them. And, but at the same time, we're not receiving the amount of funding that we really need in order to serve all those students well. And earlier, Bobby talked about counselors, even three fifty is way too many for our counselors to handle for students. And we talk about smaller class sizes all the time. I think this gentleman over here talked about twenty students in the class. Wouldn't that be a marvelous thing for us to have? But at, but at the same time, we are where we are, and I think it's important for us to continue to work with our community, both with our alternative schools, our community-based organizations, and with our other partners in the community who help us provide those services in our schools, the county health, others that, that are there for us. So as, as Director Beal said, we need, we need more of those wraparound services in our schools. And it's just a matter of us figuring out how to either provide those or how to find partners, more partners that we can work with so that we can benefit our students more. So there was a, a question, I think, I was looking for, so I'm, I'm just going to go back to the questions that Gwen Sullivan, the PAT president posed, so that you have an opportunity to have to answer some of those for her. So one of her questions was, why the services outside versus within the schools? So I know that's a, that's a really broad, big question, but maybe you could make it a little more concise and give us a response to that.
So that, thank you for that question. That is a big question, and I think that a number of the comments that you as directors have made have already touched on some of the reasons for that. One of the things that I hear and then I see working with students is a sense of being, having those wraparound services and having those relationships with individual teachers and individual students. When we were in, I was part of the high school action team and part of the committee that Director Regan was on with alignment of high school services. And one of the things that was really poignant to me when we went and listened to a focus group at Mount Scott was the number of students who struggled with addiction, the number of students who struggled with mental health issues, and the number of students who articulated, you know, I don't think that my teachers really care, or I didn't have an individual relationship that kept me at necessarily an individual school. So I think there's a, there's a, there's a variety of reasons depending on the student, and I think there's also some categorical, how do we create learning environments that are as engaging as possible? How do we create more hands-on? Some of the conversations, I think, that we're certainly already involved in, one of the things that, how do we incorporate more career technical education? How do we incorporate more internships? And one of the things that was articulated today was, in large part, part of the innovation of the community-based alternative schools. And, you know, I think of the charter schools as well with LEAP having a day a week where students are in a business. And so I think when you talk about community-based alternative schools, looking at how, looking at how they wrap around their students and talking about the levels, levels of rigor, I was really excited to hear one of the, our students talk about thinking that I was maybe going to fly out under the radar, and that's for better, not of it, not a possibility at a community-based alternative school. So I think it's really a lot of that high-level engagement that we hope for throughout our entire system pre-K-12.
So, so again, more wraparound service, more resources, relationships, innovation that we look to our alternative schools for in our charters and those, and thank you, high expectations. So, I think there's another one.
Okay.
Okay, so she also called out Salem and their graduation coaches. Can you just make a comment regarding that, or let us know about the thoughts on that one?
Absolutely. So again, that's another strategy that we have talked about in the high school action team. One of the things that I would say is Salem Kaiser, along with Portland Public, were awarded HSGI, our high school graduation initiative grants. And so while they have graduation coaches that are a little bit different than we have, what we have is we have our reconnection services and our outreach, our outreach workers who do do that with our students. And as far as having it in the Franklin Cluster and the Roosevelt Cluster, one of the things that I'm excited about is in the upcoming year, we've secured a grant from the Oregon Department of Education for an early response system. And we're really looking in the Jefferson Cluster, the Roosevelt Cluster, and the Franklin Cluster. And while we hope that all forty-three schools in those clusters will be impacted, this primary focus of, as we wrote the grant, was for six-twelve. So again, it's looking at how do we really pay specific attention to the needs of our students in middle school? And so I think that, that's some of the work that is, that is happening and forthcoming. And I'm excited about how that moves us also to do a better job of wrapping around each of our students.
And I also, I'm a big advocate for starting much earlier, and I think our third grade reading is definitely the place to start. But I am curious about what we are doing in the middle schools. You know, maybe that's better for our deep dive because it's not really related to what we're doing right here, other than those couple of schools that, I think Mount Scott and another one that take on the middle schools. But be prepared for that because it's coming back to you, okay?
Great. I'll just tell you one thing that's, because it connects to both. So part of our partnership with All Hands Raised, we have pilot sites in all six districts with Department of Human Services, who this year will be placing full-time social workers, and for us, it's George Middle School. So we'll have the opportunity to see, and they're looking at this as a, how do they change their business model of how they're working with families and kids and saying, here's where we, we, at other moments in time, as Gwen said earlier, we've had touchstone folks who were actually county employees placed in our schools, because this is where they had the best opportunity to really work directly with students and families. So this, I'm hopeful that this is the beginning of, and she said, I don't want to call this a pilot, because I want to see this as the way we're changing how we do business. I think a lot of this, how we do wraparound services is how we're working with partners, and not necessarily about new resource, but how are we, how are we making services accessible to families, which is a partnership with schools, similar with our health clinics, so.
Great, great. And one of the other things in middle schools that I understand that we're starting to try to do is to bring sports back to middle schools, and that's pretty exciting.
It's a big deal.
Because I think we're going to be making a lot of connections between the middle schools and the sixth through eighth grade programs and their high schools and the rest. And, you know, it's just another way of engaging and keeping kids focused.
Exactly. Yeah, thank you for calling that one out.
That's good, thank you. And then I also wanted to comment, just, I, I do remember when I first came on the board and I wasn't able to participate, but we did do a tour. I think Bobby was talking about a, a tour of the CBOs, and that's definitely on the leadership team's list to make sure that we have something like that available, so that as we're doing some of these deep dives around alternatives, but also high schools, we have an opportunity for everybody to get out there and appreciate the invitations. I think Tom was one of them, and some of the others, invitations, you bet, to the board members to come out and see what's actually happening, and we're going to try and make that happen this year. And then finally, yes, the deep dive on all of this, before we make our budget decisions, appreciate that. So we're going to, that's also on the list, so. Any other, any other comments? Great. So, excuse me. The board will now vote on the business agenda. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes. Yes. All opposed, please indicate by saying no. The business agenda is approved by a vote of, how many of us here? Five to zero. And then I also wanted to remind everybody, that's the end of our business agenda and the vote. I also wanted to, yay! And I, I also, I want to say thank you to all the people who came to testify about the CBOs, and I, we really appreciate especially hearing your personal stories. And I want to thank the CBOs for the work that they do, for our students and our community. Thank you very much. Saturday, right? Saturday. Okay, Saturday, the big day, Community Cares Day. Everybody get out there, go to your local school, help them make that school ready for, for the coming year. Clean it up, so they're all looking beautiful when our students arrive. And thank you very much for all being here today. The board, retreat will be held on Tuesday, September second at five in the Y-East Conference Center here at the BESC. The next study session is Tuesday, September ninth, here in the auditorium. Thank you all for being here, and this meeting is adjourned.